I'm all over the place. Go ahead.
Mike?
That's what I heard.
Lesson learned, right? Yeah, well, Edwina did too. Good evening, everyone, and I'll call this meeting to order. Please note the attendance. Seeing no one for the open forum, I'd ask everyone to, in the audience, to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the Special City Council and the Richfield School Board Work Session of March 2nd, 2015, the Special City Council Work Session of March 10th, 2015, the regular City Council Meeting of March 10th, 2015, and the Special City Council Work Session of March 16th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. This time, I, we have presentations. We have a presentation regarding the Community Emergency Response Team, our CERT team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council members. I don't know where they all went. They were all here. A lot of people walking around in green shirts, so.
They're in the back room.
They're in the back.
They should be here shortly. Here they come.
Ah, yes.
So they're all dressed in their regalia, so.
I'm gonna add mine.
And Councilmember FitzHenry has his on, too. The presentation that I'm gonna give you tonight is sort of an overview on where we started with our Community Emergency Response Team. The Richfield Department of Public Safety's Community Emergency Response Team started in 2009. When we developed our CERT team, we received grant funding from the Department of Homeland Security and also from the Citizens Corps Council. The CERT team falls under the Emergency Services Department, which falls under Public Safety, which I am responsible for. The Public Safety Department offers CERT training to Richfield residents, those who work in Richfield and those who live in the surrounding communities.
Can you stand up here in face? Are you on camera? Come right on around.
Yeah, get in front of me. We want to make sure you all get on camera.
Loop it all around.
Let's see them all. Let's see all those wonderful faces. Thank you for serving.
I'll be back. I'll kind of pop my head up.
The CERT program educates and trains adults and youth alike about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact the area. CERT community volunteers learn basic disaster skills such as emergency preparedness, fire suppression, light search and rescue, team organization, disaster medical operation. The CERT philosophy is based on the principle, help yourself, help your family, help your neighbors, and help your community when called to do so. CERT graduates attend supplemental training and exercises as they become available and attend bimonthly meetings as a forum for ongoing training and networking. CERT members learn necessary physical skills during training, but this does not mean seniors or individuals with disabilities should not participate. There's a role for everyone in CERT. In 2015, our CERT program will be working collaboratively with the City of Bloomington to add a CERT community support component that will be offered to diverse community groups. So on behalf of the Public Safety Department, myself as the Director of Public Safety, I feel that you individuals provide invaluable services to the community, to the business community, and to the Police Department, so I want to thank all of you. Thank you. Our CERT coordinator is Charlie O'Brien, who's our Coal Compliance Officer under Support Services.
I just wanted to add, I have four team leaders who have put a lot of time, extra time, going to extra training, helping to coordinate all of the events. One of them, who's been with me the longest, Grant Palms, couldn't be here tonight, but I do have three other team leaders here, and I'd just like them to hold their hand up as I call their names so we can acknowledge them. They help as trainers for CERT classes we do with other cities, as mentors for people that come on, and for special projects that we do, such as our Communications Group and our Radio Club. So first, though, someone that helps with our Youth CERT program, which is important, we team up with Safety Day and teach CERT skills to young individuals, is Claire Killian. And way on the other end is Grant Gartland, one of the commo team leaders. And on this end, Tom York, the other Communications Group leader. I thank all you guys for your service, that's all.
As a City Council, I just want to say thank you, and it's nice we could shake your hand, and thank you for being there. I see a lot of you out at our. Helping. Thank you so much for everything you do for me. Thanks for your service. I so appreciate it. Thank you. It's nice to see you guys in here. Thanks. Maybe we'll get some more recruits. They're always looking for recruits, and they have some of this training coming up, so if you're interested and want some of those things to do, I'm sure Charlie would take your phone call. So just call the Public Safety Department at the regular number, not the 911, and I'm sure that they would take your call and help you find out your way through the system. It's a great organization. I see them out at the Fourth of July all the time. Yeah, what a great thing. Wonderful presentation. It's Hattaw to Hometown Hits. Councilmember FitzHenry?
Well, I'll just kind of add on to this group. You mentioned all the things they do. They also train a lot of other agencies. Richfield's kind of been real strong in the training part, Charlie O'Brien net, so they've been a lot of the, our CERT members are training CERT members in other communities. So they're really active in that, and also I'm ecstatic that they're revitalizing the Richfield Radio Club, which is the ham radio club and repeaters, and that, we don't know how well that'll work until we need it. All other cities, when catastrophe hits, the infrastructure crumbles, but ham radios are very simple and they run, and they, sometimes they're the lifeblood of all communities, so I just want to, again, thank them for their service. I'm their elected community representative. If you want to know how I got that part, so, thanks.
Councilmember Howard?
I just want to, with, and Councilmember Garcia isn't here, but I just want to thank her for working hard to put on the Mental Health Forum that was really well attended on, with very nice weather on a Saturday morning, kind of filled up this room, and it was a really informative forum on an important topic, and I think they will be broadcasting that, so if folks have an interest in children's mental health, there's a lot of really good information about resources available, and so just want to thank Councilmember Garcia and Leguon voters and others that worked to put that together, because it was a great event.
Councilmember Elliott?
You know, I'm gonna kind of ride along on Councilmember Howard's comments. I was at the Planning Commission last night, and actually, there was three things that I watched. There's two new businesses that are coming in on the east side that are gonna develop conservatively, you know, probably between, you know, 50 and 60 jobs, all paying very good wages and everything. It's nice to see new businesses coming in and building and helping Richfield grow. And the high school was over also in regards to the health center that's gonna be put in at the high school that we talked about when we had our joint meeting. And I had some, some questions in regards to some of the issues involving the, how it was gonna be managed and run and everything, and Christina Gonzalez of the High School Superintendent staff reached out to me, and I went over and met with her, and we discussed some of my questions, and then they came last night. And I told the superintendent and the board at that time, I thought it was a wonderful idea, you know, once some of the questions or concerns I had got addressed, and they addressed them very well, and I think it's, I think it's gonna be great in terms of health. And more importantly, one of the things that was mentioned last night, and the Commission Member Rosenberg mentioned it, is because she participated with the League of Minnesota Voters on the Mental Health Forum, and they're providing mental health services to the, to the student population of Richfield, which I think, as we all know, you see it in the paper, is, is a glaring problem in addressing, and addressing it early before it gets past the problem of being, being easily dealt with. So that's gonna be part of the program that's gonna be over, and I think that's really great.
Great. Wonderful. Sounds like it was great, and I missed that opportunity as NDC. I wanted to also mention that Edwina's not here, so of course I had to make sure what the calendar was. And on the calendar that's coming up, April 24th, for those of you who've not been or, or remember this lovely event, it's the Fowl Gala Dinner. And it's out at the Minnesota Valley Country Club. This is April 24th at 6:00 PM, and you can call the Nature Center. The number is 612-861-9365. And tickets go on sale. There's only 200 seats. This does sell out. And I usually try to have a table there as well, so I try to get people to come in and sit at the table. So it's a wonderful event. I highly recommend it. They usually have wonderful music. They have a really good dinner. And they also have a silent auction with some great things. I've got some great prizes for birthday gifts there, so please. I encourage everyone to get down there and go to that. It's a well worth it. And a lot of this goes to children's programming out at our Nature Center, so those kids who don't have the dollars to come here still have the ability from our schools to come and do the, do those wonderful classes at the Nature Center. We do so much there, all around, so. The other thing is, is I was at the National League of Cities Conference out in Washington, DC, and although it seems like there's still gridlock there, there is, there are a few things that are getting through. They're being tagged onto bills and such like this. One of the things, I spent a day out on, at the noise conference, and I know you weren't able to get out there, but I spent the day there, and there was great representation from Minneapolis, Bloomington, and Edina. And so I was glad that I had also gotten there early to, to do that. There are things moving on that, and I think will affect Richfield, and at this point, we probably might want to consider, and I've talked to the City Manager, of jumping back on that. And I've had conversations with different members of our council about taking on the role to go, and also Assistant City Manager, Ham Dymatrenko. It looks like there's gonna be some, some movement on this, and I want to make sure that we are covered and that we're in the conversation, so we help shape it rather than having things just done to us. So I think that was one of the biggest takeaways I had, besides just some really great training that was out there, and it's always a great time to talk. And my understanding is that there are small little pockets of dollars and, out there that are coming through to the, actually even to Rochester has gotten some dollars for some planning and such, and so I have talked to Senator Klobuchar's office about getting some dollars for the underpass from her. So we'll see as we look at all the planning we do along those corridors and everything, and as we move forward, if there isn't something for us, so we're already asking for those kinds of things, and I was able to meet with her staff out there, and that was very fruitful, too. So those are the things that happened.
Do we need to make a recommendation or anything to rejoin it, or?
I think we do, and it's gotta be passed by the council, but I'm sure you've been hearing some of the rumblings possibly, because you're kind of the, the go-to guy here locally, and some of the federal stuff you know of as well, so if you would make the motion.
I'd make a motion that we rejoin the noise organization.
I'll second. Is there other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll be rejoining. It wasn't terribly expensive. It hasn't really gone up either, so.
I don't know what the fee was. Did you find out out there?
Said approximately between four to five thousand.
Yeah, I thought it was around five before, so.
So they said that it wouldn't be going up at all, so, well, they'll go back through that. But I mean, the organization is doing some really great things, and there's some new regulations that are coming down that we want to have some input on, especially about low-frequency noise, and how they determine what the next level or how they determine homes is very interesting. You would be very interesting to sit in there and know that they'll walk into any one house, doesn't matter what age or anything like this, and if the sound decibels are 45 or lower, they just say the rest of the neighborhood's fine. And of course, that's not very scientific, so there's a lot of things going on that were a little astounding to us.
Maybe I should also, since we're in this portion, talk about what happened at the knock?
Please, why don't you?
Okay. We had gotten our normal reports at the knock and that, but kind of a spinoff came at the knock we didn't expect. Minneapolis and that have been talking about looking at what we call the Runway Use Program. You've probably heard a little bit about this.
I heard about it.
Kind of, we thought it was a backdoor approach, and then we found out it was actually through a member of a MAC meeting that mentioned it to them, and that. What that means is they're looking at the runway use is basically the times and directions that planes go based on what's happening at the airport. Wind's gonna trump everything in storms, but at times when the winds are soft enough, they have an opportunity to change runways. And Minneapolis is asked to look at that again, and they're, they're looking at, actually, most of the arrivals are in the evening over Minneapolis, and they're actually almost saying they'd like to see more departures, which kind of baffled me, but then when you look at the statistics, about 75% of the nighttime activity at the airport is arrivals. And so they're looking at seeing less planes, but I don't know if they quite understood that the 25 to 30% that are taking off are now at full throttle versus idle. But the FAA will be looking at that, and they'll be looking at the runway use system. When the manager of the control tower talked to us, they said they're already fudging about 15 minutes of the runway use in the morning, because what they're finding out is planes are no longer taking off at 6:00 AM all the time like they used to, and they're kind of getting a pushback into the, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock times. So the times would probably be pushed back in the morning, and I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the evening, but they're gonna look at it, and they're gonna bring a recommendation before the knock. We looked at it, and we said that we wanted to, before we commented on it, see exactly what that means to Richfield.
Yes, exactly.
Because truthfully, arrivals don't affect Richfield because of the runway alignment. They're going over Lake Harriet, and they're going, normally staying north of the crosstown.
It's the departure.
Right, the departures will, and we already know that, you know, they come over City Hall at times. So we're objecting to the part that we're giving our residents something new that they didn't expect again, and it's a shift really to, and it may be a good move on Minneapolis's part to push it, you know, where they're coming over Richfield again and that, so we'll look at that, and we'll report back, but I'll stay on top of it.
What does that mean? You know, that was one of the things that we talked about at the noise conference, which you probably will know about, but for the edification of our other two council members, they talked about the RNAV implementation, and as they looked at that, they talked about how much, how many more planes and how much faster they could push those through. And what that meant is more noise. It actually, I mean, when you increase the number of planes, it isn't a higher intensity, but it's more, it changes the tone of everything. It changes the characteristics, because they can take off almost every 45 seconds. And that's a real difference in what we have now when it's every couple minutes. That's, we will, somebody's gonna notice that, probably. And so that's what they're saying is gonna be one of the issues around here. The other thing that was very astounding is that Arizona, Phoenix, just went through this, and they didn't do any outreach at all, and it, the people were just screaming. And in fact, in one of the big bills that passed through already, they did slip in a bill that gave FAA 90 days to rectify that situation, because the noise all of a sudden came, and people were not, there was not outreach, and how much that impacted everybody and how they reacted to it. So it was, these are some of the things that are going on around the country. It's very interesting to hear.
Yeah, when you talk about, yeah, they can put them tail, you know, you know, nose to tail.
Yep.
That, that can happen. We're not gonna see an increase at the airport here that we've seen. They've seen more mergers. That was part of the presentation. We had more mergers of airlines, and now they're pushing more passengers with bigger planes. So we're getting less flights. We're actually dropped a lot in the past year, so we'll see that. The RNAV part, you're right about, but we'll have input on, you know, some of the design of that and try to keep that over the crosstown.
Yep, exactly.
The nice thing is they probably will climb faster, too, when they're on RNAV, so it means that they're gonna get higher faster and quieter faster. And I'm hoping that we see this performance decent. I don't know if you've heard about that. Basically, it, somebody coming in on 35, which doesn't affect Richfield really as much, but the other cities, will go at idle at Des Moines, Iowa, and all the way, all the way down into Minneapolis Airport at idle. And it's gonna change the carbon footprint. It's gonna change the noise they're gonna hear out there. And I think if they can do it for the two runways in Minneapolis, they're gonna appreciate that, too, so.
I do, too.
We won't see it much, because ours are, most of our noise is the takeoff.
The takeoff, yeah. Okay, any other items for council discussion or Hattaw? I'll ask for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Acting City Manager, John Stark, the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further council actions on these items would be necessary. Tonight, we have four items on the Consent Agenda. A, consideration of the approval of authorizing the City Manager to publish a notice of intent to franchise related to cable television. B, consideration of the approval of a resolution amending the allocation of the 2014 general fund budget. Item C, consideration of the approval of the renewal of the contract with the DESA Minneapolis for 2015, 2016 for auctioning forfeited vehicles from our Department of Public Safety. And item D, consideration of the approval of the continuation of the agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of public health services to the City of Richfield for the year 2015. And that concludes the Consent Agenda.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just want to say that I think Bloomington, you know, this contract with Bloomington, or the provision of public health, because I sit on the Advisory Board of Health, the city is excellent. They do great work for us when we call them and we ask questions. They're always, and they, they great, do great work, so I'm really, really pleased with that. Councilmember Elliott, you have item six.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item calls for the consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city zoning code and a resolution approving summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance would allow the following in the single-family residential districts. One, construction of an up to two-story garages with conditions, and two, construction of accessory dwelling units. At the request of the Planning Commission, staff has drafted the attached ordinance related to taller accessory garage structures and accessory dwelling units. The ordinance is based on feedback received from Richfield's online forum, which is Richfield Connect, and a Planning Commission Work Session held last December. The proposed ordinance would allow both taller accessory garage structures and accessory dwelling units in the R single-family and R1 low-density single-family residential districts with conditions. Conditions include limiting height based on the width of the lot, requiring complimentary building materials, requiring owner occupancy of one unit, in the case on the accessory dwelling units, and the provision of adequate parking. A public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on February 23rd. No members of the public spoke. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the proposed ordinance. At this time, I will make the motion that we can discuss it. This is a second reading, so I'm not gonna go through the entire historical context. But at this time, I would move to approve the second reading of the ordinance amending the Richfield City Code to allow taller accessory garages and accessory dwelling units in the single-family residential districts. And two, approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending regulations related to taller accessory garages and accessory dwelling units in single-family residential districts.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may, I, I just think that, that, you know, you see the, the national builders now that are still building in the third and fourth outrings suburbs and everything are actually building in additional living structures for, for parents. I think it's a wave of the future, given the, the aging population and the fact that a lot of children who now are 50 and 60 years old would like to have an opportunity to provide residence or assistance for family members or, including their parents. And I think that this is, is a good idea for Richfield. It allows us an opportunity to, to take what, what we've got now and figure out ways of doing it, and it makes it a little bit easier. It still is gonna fit within, within what we need in Richfield in terms of livability and everything, but it's gonna give us an opportunity to provide comfort and sustenance to, to some of our older relatives that, that we want to keep an eye on, but they still want to maintain that independence on their own. So, so I think it's, it's keeping with the times, and I think it's, it's a good thing for Richfield.
Well, I see there's an awful lot of setbacks and other things around this, so that it looks like it's not encumbering on other individual dwellings. I mean, that's what we always concern about in the size of 300 to 800 feet. I mean, it's not gonna fit in every, not everybody's gonna have the space to be able to do it within these confines. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Mayor. You know, the height of the structure is limited. If it's lesser than a 75-foot lot, it's only allowed to be 18 feet or one and a half stories. If it's wider than a 75-foot lot, it could be up to 25 feet in height, but it could never be taller than the primary building. So there, we do think that there are a lot of protections in here to make sure that they, that they're not overwhelming.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I would just add that I think it's thoughtful in terms of how the, how people in a neighborhood might be impacted, so it makes this, it's a change I think could benefit folks, but I don't think it's gonna come at anyone's expense because of the thought that's went into it.
Any other discussion? Then I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember FitzHenry, you have item seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is consideration of a second reading of an ordinance amending the city zoning code and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance would prohibit recreational marijuana sales outlets and marijuana production and establish conditions related to the location and operation of medical marijuana dispensaries. I'm gonna just go ahead and summarize this, since it's the second one. We've thought long and hard, and what we have noticed is in other states, Colorado, Washington and that, that have started with maybe medical marijuana, that they've moved it to recreational marijuana, and the city has chosen not to allow that in our city. So that's what this ordinance really proposes, while it still allows the possibility of medical marijuana dispensaries. There's only a few locations in the city can actually fit, and I'm trying to pull up the map now, if anybody has a map, but it's a short period over on 78th Street and one over by Taft Park, and if you look.
You wouldn't mind by a park, anyway.
Yeah, and it wouldn't qualify by the park anyways, so it really does restrict it because of the schools and residential property and that. So unless anybody has any other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Please.
Okay, so I, I make the motion that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending the Richfield City Code to allow medical marijuana dispensaries as a conditional use in the general business district, and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending the Richfield City Code to allow medical marijuana dispensaries as a conditional use in the general business district.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Howard, you have the next item.
I have consideration of the final plans and specifications for the Portland Avenue Reconstruction Project and staff authorization to advertise for bids. The City Council approved the preliminary layout, Concept 2 Alternative, at their April 22nd, 2014 meeting. The Concept 2 Alternative includes the following design elements. A single 11-foot vehicle travel lane in each direction with a dual-direction 11-foot center turn lane. Two 6-foot on-street bike lanes using the same concrete gutter pan design as 76th. A 6-foot vegetated boulevard behind the curb on both sides of the street. A 6-foot concrete sidewalk on the west side of the street. An 8-foot bituminous multi-use trail on the east side of the street. Full-access center median islands at the minor intersections, including 73rd. Final plans have been developed, consistent with the approved design. Art along the corridor, poetry on Portland will also be developed as part of the project. And maybe staff could talk a little about the timing.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Now, this project.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, this project, if it needs final approval, not only by the council, but the federal highway is reviewing the plan because it has federal funding in it, we're hoping to have a bid opening yet in April, and that would mean the contractor could start as soon as May, the contractor has some flexibility on the timing of the schedule, but that's kind of the tentative schedule at this time. And I guess I have a copy of the entire plan, I'm sure you don't want to see it, but sure enough, I do have one here, we have an abbreviated version of the plan on the back of the council letter, so you get an idea, but it's very much a technical document. A couple of things, we did not encounter any surprises in going through the design process, which is good, because design surprises are usually not good in going through the design, and right now, the engineer's estimate would allow us to keep on target for our estimated cost for the project, so the pieces are coming together now, we just have to get the final approvals and get it out to bid.
So we didn't see any price increases at all, like we did on 66th Street?
The consulting firm, Kimling-Horn, that did the design, did an engineer's estimate, and it's staying within the...
Wow, that's great.
Our expectations.
That's really good to hear.
It is. Well, we have, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we haven't had the bid opening yet, you know, so...
Okay, I know, I know.
And when he said timing, how long will it take to complete, I guess that's the, everything, we're going to want to know.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, substantial completion yet this year, assuming we can get the project out the door and get them started.
Do you want to make a motion?
By motion, I'll make the motion to approve final plans and specifications for the Portland Avenue Reconstruction Project, CP 41008, and authorize staff to advertise for bids.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have the city manager's report.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, of course, I, I'm wearing a suit and tie because I'm the acting city manager tonight. But the other reason is that I was at the Senate today testifying on the extension of the Tiff District, or the Cedar Port or Tiff District, that was at the Senate Tax Committee, it was a bill that was brought forward by Senator Torres-Rae, Representative Solcom has brought a similar bill forward in the House, that hasn't gone to committee yet, but I think that the testimony went well today, and, you know, we're optimistic that we'll get that extension.
And I'd like to add that I had talked to Senator Wicklin yesterday about the firefighters and the whole program around, you know, the wellness visits and everything, and it looks like language is coming together for that as well, and our chief, Wayne Kiwi, was there testifying as well, and I was making phone calls to make sure that this was going through, so it's looking very promising, even on both sides, so, good news. Any other news or updates?
No, thank you.
Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, and seeing no further action, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.